We call this work meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, Councilmember CO, Dylan Gearbock, McClellan, and Mayor Pro Tem Tahar. Councilwoman Mitchell will be absent from both the work meeting and regular meeting. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell and Clerk Royal. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, please sign in the back. We would appreciate that. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the work meeting agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So is.
As submitted, Ms. Dylan?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We cut to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make counter questions to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Yes. Mary Cass. I have another commitment for the trustee church, and I was hoping I might be able to leave these for the council in case I'm not back for the three-minute public.
You want to submit them to the clerk? That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nice to be in two places.
Additional citizen comments? There are no additional citizen comments. Then we'll proceed to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is employee healthcare. You have a memo from Steve Gerard dated November the 13th that was distributed, as well as a memo from Capnic Insurance dated November the 13th. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Campbell, and I would remind both my council colleagues and our guests, we are recording this council meeting, so if you please be sure to speak into the mic and make sure that your green light is illuminated as a base, that would be great. Mr. Campbell, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, make this quick. So, we have, of course, two presentations. First one being the annual healthcare renewal. I think there's some very good news on that front, so. But we did the, done the same process that we've done for the last several years now. We get the renewals, we review with Capnic, we assemble our employee committee, our healthcare committee, and we look at the renewals and have discussions, and then use those folks and they go talk to their constituencies, and then they kind of come back and make a recommendation. And so, you'll be receiving a recommendation shortly. But we have Dave and Beth, and Beth is going to be taking over for Dave. Most of you have seen Dave now for the last several years, and before that, his dad, Tom. And I asked Beth for pronouncing, because I know I'm going to slaughter it, Madziar?
Yes.
Wow, look at that, Madziar. But, of course, Dave Unzicker, and he's advancing, he's staying with Capnic, but he's advancing on in the organization, so. But he wanted to see this through, right? But certainly, even in extremely capable hands with Beth, so. But a couple things. So, the renewal, we're going to talk about the renewal. We're going to talk about the potential changes for retiree healthcare. And then, there was a request to include domestic partner rider, to allow domestic partner benefits, and so we'll talk about that as well. And then, as Mayor Morrow just mentioned, we just also received this afternoon the opinion from Mr. Gerard, referenced the retiree healthcare. So, essentially, I mean, I'm a bit in agreement with Capnic and with staff, but unless there's any questions, am I turning over to you, Dave, or to Beth?
I'll start, and then I'll jump in.
Okay. Beth?
Well, good evening. As you can see in the memo, we received a premium decrease of four and a half percent from the carrier, so that would be for the medical, dental, vision, and life insurance. So, it's not very often that we get a decrease in premiums from insurance carriers, so that is very nice. There is the PA 152 hard cap that increased 3.4% this year, so that offsets the decrease in premiums. So, we have calculated the increase in PA 152 cost at that hard cap maximum at just over $22,000. So, to break down the renewal decrease, there was an overall premium decrease for the medical, dental, and vision of around $46,000. The actives, the portion that related to the active medical insurance, was $37,000. The retiring medical coverage was a $13,000 decrease, and the dental and vision did increase just under $4,000. So, overall, with the increase to the premium and the HSA contributions, the cost to the city would be just over $12,000. So, that accounts to the, for the PA 152 increase, and that's offset by the decrease in premiums for the retirees and the increase in premium for the medical and dental. So, as Todd mentioned, the healthcare committee did meet, and they would like to recommend maintaining the current plan design. We have looked at other medical carriers, however, because of the multiple divisions related to the retiree medical plans, it wouldn't be feasible to move to another carrier because they wouldn't allow the multiple plan designs because of the retiree divisions that are set up. Though we did work this summer to try to consolidate the number of divisions, we're still required to leave manually because of the different plan design.
Anything you'd like to add, my friend?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Just Campbell, anything you'd like to add before I open it up for a round of questions?
I would.
Well, first of all, very good news. Delighted to receive it. Mayor Pro Tem Tahar, can I start with you, if you have any questions for either staff or our guests from Capnic Insurance Group?
Um, no. No questions at this time.
Very good. Councilmember CO?
I am. I do. I'm confused by the, on the one hand, we have a decrease, and on the other hand, have this hard cap increase. So, there's a net increase? Is that correct? How does that hard cap work? I'm not, I don't understand.
So, the hard cap is determined at the state level, so the State Department comes back each year and sets an increase on what the allowable amount that a municipality can contribute at a single, two-person, or family level. And for us here at the City of Celine, the way it's worked is primarily with our HSA-style arrangement, where you have the premiums as being one portion, and then a contribution to the HSA being the other portion. As the premiums go down, the HSA contribution goes up to sort of near what the allowable PA 152 amount is. That increase more than offsets the decrease received by the, from the insurance carrier, and that's why we end up with a net increase.
And that money goes into the HSA accounts for the individuals?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll just add one other thing. This is obviously a very unique year because of the decrease. If we think about last year, where we had a significant increase, the majority of that increase was absorbed at the employee E-level with the reduction in the contribution to the HSA. So, the, last year, when our premiums jumped up 15%, the employees ended up with a much lower contribution to their HSA because PA 152 went up, I think it was 2.9% last year, if I remember correctly. So, year to year, it's going to vary, but this is, I think, a very unique year.
Thank you.
Yeah, which brings me back to, you know, like, three or four years ago, we had that significant decrease, like about $80,000, whatever, and we passed that all on to the employees instead of taking the advantage of that savings. Is that still a possibility with this decrease, or is it? That's my question, because when we get savings, I don't want to necessarily pass them all on to the employees because there's no way we're going to be able to maintain our.
Yeah. So, the answer is, I mean, you as city council have the ability to set the amount you're going to spend, and so we've, each year here in this room, have decided to use the PA 152 numbers, but you're not required to. If you chose not to use the PA 152 maximum, then it could be set at a level where the city would incur some savings, for sure. At the same time, you know, I think employees are sort of used to what they've been getting, and they would clearly be aware if we didn't do the PA 152, which could have, maybe go back to sort of overall morale. And then, again, as I was saying before, in years where we've had not very good increases, such as last year, the employees absorb the majority of that increase. So, you know, again, it's a unique year, but you have the ability to set that level where you want to set it.
So, in essence, that's my question. So, this year, we're basically giving that money back that we charged them, so they're getting a reduction compared to what we charged them. So, even though they were set at a certain rate, we're now going to?
Yeah, that's certainly one way to look at it, for sure. The one thing I would just caution you on that thought process is that you just don't see medical insurance, for the most part, being like zeros for multiple years, right? So, to think of spending a dollar today and thinking about having that same dollar be worth that same dollar three years from now, it's probably not going to be realistic, so you have to build in some sort of inflation there.
Oh, no, I don't disagree with some inflation. It's just maintaining, not necessarily passing it all back and then placing more of a hit onto the city.
Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Dylan?
Um, just some basic questions. What prompted the decrease?
So, I sat here last year and explained to you all how we had a new underwriting formula from Blue Cross. They spent a lot of time and effort in previous years looking at other care, or other Blue Cross entities across the country, and they came back with one, and the claims impact was a big factor in our increase last year, so we weren't getting the full discount we were getting in previous years. It appears, as we sort of get another year under our belt, that that was a one-time adjustment, and claims are still important, and your claims were very good over the period they looked at, which is, it's not like a true year. It's like, it's more like you look back almost 16 months, and they cut it off about four months before our renewal. But that was less than what was expected, and so they gave us a decrease in rates based on that.
So, for planning purposes, is there any way to project what it would be next? I mean, it seems like we're just all over the map, and it just, it's so hard to sort of, oh, well, yeah, we got it, you know, favorable this year after we got kind of kicked in the gut last year on it, and it's like, well, what's going to happen next year for planning purposes?
Yeah. So, it's, one of the problems is because it's claims-based, we don't necessarily know what the claims are going to look like, and we can't necessarily, we can make some predictions and some models. I mean, when I get that question often, I'm telling people that, you know, assuming things go roughly how they've gone in previous years, right now, you can expect sort of like 5% to 10% increases. However, with what's going on in Washington right now, there's a lot of uncertainty, a lot of scared insurance companies with like subsidies being eliminated or reduced, a lot of concerned citizens about what's going to happen with their insurance, and so there's, all that uncertainty makes it a lot more difficult to predict that. But we can get claims data, we can look at it with some frequency or regularity, which will help make some, some sort of assumptions, but it's not going to give us the percent increase that we would be expecting, like, I can't tell you six months from now, like, if we were sitting in this room, that, oh, this is what you should expect for next year's increase. We can say, based on the time period they're looking at, these are how the claims are trending, this is what was expected, you're moving in a good direction or a bad direction.
Okay. Now, is it claims? When you refer to claims, are, do they take like our pool versus a regional pool versus a national pool, or is there, like, at what level are they?
Specific to the City of Celine.
Just specifically to our claims?
Yeah.
So, as long as our claims stay in love, then you just sort of?
To a certain extent. So, they're going to primarily look at your claims, and they basically, that's sort of step one. Step two is, they pull out some of the very high-cost claims, so over, is it $100,000? Yeah. Over $100,000 claims, they pull that out for calculating your purpose, the purpose of your renewal, and then they add it back in as a pooled cost. So, that's where you start getting, you know, more of a regional look. And the reason that's done is, one, it protects you from if somebody had, you know, major bypass surgery, or had some sort of just very rare cancer that was super expensive. You as the city would not incur the full burden of that claims experience. It gets spread out across the city.
My other question, it may pertain to the next part of what you're going to talk about, but I know that you had mentioned it already, which is with our retirees, have we reduced any of those groups down? Have we eliminated any of those extra groups yet?
So, we've been able to consolidate a few of them. We, I think, eliminated probably four or five this summer, if that's on record. So, we're moving in the right direction. Part of the problem, though, is when looking at it, realizing that we needed to add one to accommodate a retiree that was eligible for retiree benefits, that we hadn't created a suffix yet for. So, lost three or four, excuse me, four or five and gained one. So, net, we're about three or four, and I can't remember the exact number.
Okay. So, until we get, we're at a net zero, though, we're really stuck with Blue Cross.
Yeah. And it's more to it, not just the number of plans, but also the number of retirees you have. So, that is one that will disqualify us from a lot of carriers. They look at the percent of actives to retirees, and if your number is above a certain number, sometimes it's like 15%, sometimes 10%, if you're above that, carriers just, they're not interested in looking at you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilman McClellan?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions from council members? Mr. Gearbox?
Can you go through the math again, as I'm looking at the $46,000 in the savings and $21,000 in additional premiums? This is total cost of $12,260. How do we get to the addition of $12,260, I guess?
Do you want to go first?
I'm seeing a bunch of numbers, I'm just trying to figure, is it the $22,000 plus 21 plus?
So, the PA 152 contribution would be increased $21,763. The difference between that and the number on this page would be there are two instances in the PPO plan and one of the HSA plan, or the BCN plan, where there's no contribution for the single coverage. Now, it would be negative, so we backed that out. So, $21,763 in increased PA 152 costs.
Right.
And then, the decrease in the retiree premiums, the $13,230, and the increase in the premium for the dental and vision coverage.
So, when I'm looking at this, total savings seems to be, total premium decrease of $46,530. Correct. Subtracting off the $21,763, it's approximately $24,000. It's still savings, then?
Correct.
And where's the other, I guess, $36,000 in additional expenses?
So, the increased, the increased PA 152 contribution would be just under $22,000. And then, we do have the premium savings, but that, so the difference between the premium savings and the increased PA 152 contribution would be $58,000, the difference there. So, that would be allotted to lower contributions to premium for employees and a higher contribution to the HSA.
Okay. Can we maybe just get that, ma'am? I just want to see how that all plays out. Because when I look at that, I'm thinking that, just as I'm thinking, there's somewhere in there, there's a number that I don't see on the page that clearly shows how it got to $12,000. Because I'm coming from that 46 and the 21, and I know there's something else in there, I just don't see it.
Well, the $21,000 does not account for the active $37,000 that decreased. So, it's strictly the $21,000 increase to the PA 152 contribution, and then it's offset by the decrease in retiree premiums and increase in dental and vision for the actives. When we're looking at the cost to the city, the 3.4% increase in PA 152 contribution is the approximate $22,000. So, in other words, in the calculation of the $12,000, we're not looking at the whole $46,000 decrease.
That's what I want to see. Thanks. Okay.
Any other questions? Staff, can I make any additional comments at this time?
No, I mean, the, with the HSA, well, primarily, majority of actives are on the HSA, and we utilize the, and I think Dave coined the phrase maximization, maximum utilization. So, essentially, we're targeting the premiums first, and then whatever's left then can go into the HSA account, right, that can be used towards it deductible. And so, it's at a similar rate as it had initially, well, I shouldn't say initially, but the idea was that when we first went to HSA, the city contributed 100% to the HSA accounts as a kind of a peace offering, if you will, to an olive branch, to make that transition from the former insurance policy that we used to have, plans that we had, which also reduced our costs pretty significantly back then. And then, depending on, there was collective bargaining agreements and had, which had a little more of a, they got more towards their HSA than, say, like, the non-union, but now that we're all, we have a couple collective bargaining sessions, agreements ago, we were able to get that general language in there, right, that says we're, you know, we're going to provide the same for everybody. And so, having said that, this is essentially, so last year, when the rates went up, the city was, because they adopted the PA 152, the hard cap, was only responsible for that additional 2.9%. And then, the rest of the increase, to be fully, to fully fund your HSA, then that employee would be responsible for paying the remainder. So, this is, certainly, to Mr. Gearbox's point about, it is, it is the same a couple years ago, where, again, the employees were rewarded because of the savings, because more money was able to be put towards the HSA. And then, it's up to that each, it's up to each individual employee if they want to max, if they want to put as, the maximum that they can by IRS rules into their HSA account. So, that also determines how much it hits their pocketbook, how much they're willing to, whether or not they're willing to fully fund their HSA account.
Do you want to transition now to retiree healthcare?
Yes.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
So, in 2018, we estimate that the premiums associated with retiree medical, dental, and vision coverage will be just under $300,000. We've identified an area for potential cost savings. So, there are currently 13 contracts with 16 members, meaning spouses, or in one case, an independent child that's disabled, that have what we call a comp contract. So, in this case, the Medicare would be primary, and the plan for the WRAP plan through Medicare, through Blue Cross, would be secondary, and prescription drugs would be covered as secondary. There's a Medicare Advantage Plan that works in a similar fashion as the Blue Care Network that's currently in place today, the Medicare Advantage, Blue Care Network Plan, where the member would still be required to have Medicare cards A and B. However, they wouldn't show that Medicare card when they're seeking services, they would just use the Blue Cross card, and the Blue Cross plan would coordinate those benefits. As we mentioned, this memo states that the benefits would be very similar. There are some differences, some better, some worse, but overall, very similar to what they have today, and they would only use their Blue Cross card on this Medicare Advantage Plan. It wouldn't be a coordination situation with Medicare and Blue Cross. So, the savings would be approximately $78,000 to move to this Medicare Advantage Plan.
Very good. Again, Mayor Pro Tem Tahar, I'll start with you, if you want to make sure you get the microphone from Councilmember Gearbock. Do you have any questions for either staff or our guests from Capnic Insurance Group regarding retiree health insurance?
Has this possibility been discussed with either the staff group or any of the retirees at all? Has, no? Okay.
Well, yeah, I was, I was just going to say what Dave did with his head shaking, but yeah, this has just been internally, this is under, from the direction that council gave us last year during budget.
I didn't read Mr. Gerard's full memo, but the bottom line appears to be if they are equivalent enough to not present a problem for us, a legal problem. Okay. Thank you. That's it for now.
Thank you. Councilmember CO?
I'll pass.
The only one thing I think we had come up with a concern was individuals that don't live in Michigan. Was that taken into consideration, the situation, so we have abilities for people that are in-state versus out-state?
What about two?
Yeah, we do, at least two, and this plan would accommodate those. It's a Blue Cross PPO, so it would give the reciprocity with every other state that has a Blue Cross PPO program, so they should not have an issue using this.
Okay. Yeah, and that's good. My, actually, I switched my father to this plan, and it did end up being better than what he had had before, and at a cheaper rate.
You can hate typing, keep that microphone close by you, Mr. Gearbock, to be able to pass it on. I'll let Councilwoman McClellan show that one. Councilwoman Dylan, the floor is yours.
Well, Mr. Gearbock just answered my question, or asked my question, which was about the out-of-states. So, you know, I haven't had a chance to read this memo that was just provided, but, I mean, I'm thinking that it's a significant savings for the city, and if it's still going to make the employees, the retirees, excuse me, whole in their medical coverage, I'm all in favor of it.
Yeah, my questions were already asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions? Is the group comfortable pursuing this as an option? Obviously, Mr. Gearbock alluded to the fact that he is, Councilwoman Dylan is, I am. Mr. Tahar, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I'm just scanning the chart that's attached to Mr. Gerard's memo, and having just been thinking about this with my own retiree healthcare. It looks, I don't, yeah, I'm in, it looks, it looks like it's good coverage, so I would be in favor of pursuing it.
Okay. Mr. CO, are you comfortable letting staff pursue this?
I tend to be a skeptic. I find it very difficult time trying to follow some of the logic insurance companies use and predicting that things would be hunky-dory in the future. I'm also off-put by the court's finding that because there wasn't specific language in the contract, that the employees only assumed that they're going to be covered for life, that they were not covered for life. Seems like the game changes continuously, and I guess, I'm in league with my colleagues that if there's no substantive change, then I don't see any harm in it. But, it's just like when everybody was hot to switch from the defined contribution, or the defined benefit to the defined contribution retirement plan. When the market was hot, everybody thought that'd be such a great deal, and now, it ain't such a great deal. So, I don't know what could tip over or impact the insurance industry that would cause this to be not such a great deal in the future, and that's what I'd be wary of. Because a lot of people have gone out here, they retired, they've done other things and planned on, it's kind of a coverage. If all of a sudden, the coverage goes from good to bad because of some unforeseen condition, not through their own fault, then I find it very difficult to countenance that it's a responsible thing for us to do to accept that. But, again, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell the future.
Thank you, Mr. CO. Councilman McClellan?
Yeah, I would be inclined to support it, for sure. I'm just looking at this chart again, too. So, the major difference from what I can gather, looking at this, is the pharmacy coverage and the out-of-pocket, annual out-of-pocket maximum. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, yeah, I think, I mean, other than that, I think it looks like to be really, really similar, so I would, I would be supportive.
Okay. So, let's proceed like this, unless there's objection from the day, as Mr. Campbell continued to pursue it. Obviously, I would hope that you'll make time in the next couple of weeks to offer to meet with Councilwoman Mitchell, since this would be... to meet with Councilwoman Mitchell, since this would be, this would have been her first stab at this particular process, to fill her in on what was discussed, not only relating to in retiree health insurance, but also active employee health insurance. Just keep us in the loop. Mr. Seal?
Might I ask that, to the extent possible, I'd be included in those conversations to help educate me further on this?
Absolutely.
Because it's a complicated issue.
Yep. We would extend that invitation to any member of council who would like to sit down with the city manager or city staff to learn more about this. I don't want to speak for you, but I'm sure you would welcome phone calls, emails, or scheduling an appointment.
Yeah, in my mind, I think the best way would, we invite Katnick to come in and we'd sit down and get into, you know, any in-depth questions that you may have that either you didn't have tonight or weren't answered. So we can certainly do that. And then also, just as a, just as a note, it's about a 90-day, correct? Once the decision is made, it's about a 90-day. And we certainly, our plan would be, staff, we would, we would have a, like we have an open enrollment session for our active employees, we would have an open enrollment for our retirees to help educate them on the, to talk to them, invite them. And of course, obviously, there are a couple that live out of state, but we would certainly provide information to them and, you know, that's what they, you know, we're happy to do, communicate, even if like a Skype message, whatever, I mean, we can, we can certainly, we want to help educate them too, because I agree with Mr. Seal. I mean, yeah, it's a significant change. And I mean, it's a significant change in that it's just a change, right? You've been moving along this direction. And so we want to be cognizant that, we want to show them, we want to, you know, we don't want to just pull a rug underneath their feet. So we, I think we, I would agree, well, I think we would agree, Mr. Seal, I mean, we owe that to them for the many years of service that they provided for this community. So we want to do our best to continue. But we know, the fact of the matter is that it's just become really expensive when resources don't seem to be growing on trees, they seem to be dwindling. So, yes, we can, we'd be happy to do that and shoot me an email, anybody, so obviously Mr. Seal is interested. And then we'll invite Councilmember Mitchell. And if any other council member would like to participate, just let me know. And we'll get you dates and times and we'll get a meeting here very soon.
Mr. Gearbo?
Is there a possibility that you could provide a, what I'd like to see, a scenario for each one of the existing plans and then comparing it to what the Medicare Advantage would do if you had a certain circumstance? Because when I'm, we have some, what I consider Cadillac plans, and then we have what this is. I'd like to see where those differences are so that we understand what the impact is and the reality of, or am I not thinking that right?
I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So you're asking like if we could go through a couple of claims scenarios, like outline those for you?
Yep. So that we'd have examples of the ones that are even existing policies compared to this.
Yeah, I think we could do something like that. We would work with Blue Cross to make sure we get everything right, but I don't see that being a big problem.
Okay. Again, that's my thing. And I know there is the concerns about maintaining, you know, parity and so forth that I want to have in terms of what type of services are provided. But knowing from my own personal experience, having my father's union and a contract and for 30 years has not had his benefits covered, there's a lot of individuals out there that don't have that covered as a result of a contract or so forth. And they assumed that was going to happen, but there's a lot of things that we have to maintain and cover our costs on. One of it being the entire pension liability. So wherever we can balance it out between retirees and active employees, I think this is a good move to try and do that. I know there is a concern about the insurance not being there, but I think that's a concern for all of us, regardless of whether we're retired or if we're even working now, so.
Mr. Campbell, do you want to begin the discussion on domestic partner benefits?
Certainly. So the last item for healthcare, it's just that we have a request to adopt the domestic partner rider policy. And so as you can see from Beth's memo, I'm trying to steal a lot of her thunder since she put the effort into it, but essentially, you know, the domestic partner coverage was popular prior to a couple of years ago when the Supreme Court made the change for same-sex marriages. And now that that's law of the land, my understanding is, talking with Katnick as well as with Mr. Gerard, our legal counsel, that a lot of businesses are going, companies are going away from that because it was, that was in order to bridge that gap. So now, so the request is specific to folks that, whether same-sex or heterosexual marriage, that it's, that this is, that they're couples, but they wouldn't be married. And so there are, my understanding is, there's some conditions that you have to meet in order to qualify for that. For instance, maybe participating together in the ownership of a home, for instance, those types of things. But, so anyway, so this, so it's, there may or may not be some direct cost increase depending on the individuals that would immediately qualify, but there would certainly be additional exposure by adding people to the, to the plan that could also add cost. But having said that, Beth, if you want to take it from there? Or Dave? Oh, Dave, oh, Dave's doing it.
So as Todd alluded to, the domestic partner riders for insurance companies were created basically to solve a perceived inequality where in Michigan, certain individuals could not marry each other. When the Supreme Court basically defined that that was not a legal situation and opened up marriage to both same-sex and opposite-sex, it's perceived pretty much as the solution to that problem. And when we've worked with other employers, basically, the belief is that the domestic partner would be a solution to a problem that doesn't exist anymore. And so many of them have either dropped that rider or just not adopted it when requested. The rider itself, as it moves forward, would be for both same-sex and opposite-sex, non-married individuals that met certain criteria, as Todd alluded to. So cohabitation, shared bank accounts, I think living together had to been for like at least six months. So it's actually, I think, more difficult to qualify under the domestic partner rider than it would be to get married where, I think in Michigan, you have to wait three days or something and get a license. So anyways, the rider is available, but not required, obviously, to be elected. I want to address the cost, excuse me, the cost for a second, the cost component. If somebody were to move from a single to a two-person, that would be an additional cost to the city. If somebody moved from a two-person to a family, that would be a direct cost to the city as far as premiums go. And then the sort of invisible potential increased cost would be with claims data. So we mentioned in our previous conversation that claims are a big factor for our renewals each year. And I know that we really can't ask these questions, but potentially, if you brought somebody in that was a high claimant person, it could impact everybody on the program. So it's something to consider. I'm not sure it would be the full, you make your decision based on that, but it is something that could be a negative impact to the program as a whole.
Thank you, Dave. Mayor Protem Tahar, any questions? Please.
So it has, I guess it has to do with the definitions and criteria for qualifying. So you mentioned it's, if something might move from a single person to a family situation to this?
So if I am a single, non-married individual working for the city, and I have a domestic partner who, you know, in theory would be my second covered, or potentially, if they have a child, that child would also be eligible, so I could be going from a single to a two-person or a family.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Seal?
So if, and this might be more a question for city manager than for the insurance company. If it appears that the state law is such that allows same-sex marriage now, so there's a remedy in that regard for people who previously were disqualified from insurance coverage, why would we want to now, at this point, entertain adding a domestic partner policy?
That's a good question.
It was requested.
It was requested by an employee, and so we said we would bring it forward. He requested it at, to the Employee Healthcare Committee. And so we brought it forward because we certainly can't, but no, I, I think, again, I think the best way, I think it summed up, as Dave said, is you're doing something for a problem that's not, that doesn't exist currently. And it does, there are potential, well, there will be additional claims that wouldn't necessarily otherwise be there. So, yeah, I, my recommendation would be to not proceed.
I guess I'd need to know more about what the criterion would be. Like Mr. Tahar mentioned, you know, it's a matter of living together for an extended period of time and having joint bank account and, and, and something that signifies some solidified relationship, I might be more amenable to it than just having somebody move in and saying, well, this is my girlfriend and her kids and they need to move.
Totally agree. There's an affidavit that we can provide to Todd, and you can see the criteria. Blue Cross is very specific about that.
Why don't you make sure to send that along? It could be a helpful document to reference.
Yep.
Anything further, Councilmember Seal? Mr. Gearbo?
No questions, but I don't support adding the domestic partnership because I think we've solved the problem by having marriage. In fact, I've always been in concern about singles not getting the benefit of the additional money that's paid out for the marriage and support for that kind of family benefits and such. So there's an inequality there. Just to add another piece in there where you can actually go out and get married and that's the penalty, you have to get married in order to have benefits, then that's your, your call.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Dillon?
How is domestic partner categorized and how is it defined? Is it specifically defined as single-sex?
So a domestic partner rider used to be specific to same-sex individuals, and that was purely intended to basically try and provide equality
Right.
in a situation where it was not legal to get married. So now, under the, with the adoption of same-sex marriages being legal, the new domestic partner riders are not specific to same-sex or opposite-sex.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. That, thank you very much.
The floor?
Yeah, I don't see really what the point is. I mean, if you don't have, don't have a problem and you don't want to, I would say.
You would say pass?
Pass. Thank you.
So it sounds like I got two emphatic passes. You'll send over the affidavit. Unless there's objections, we're going to sort of maintain the status quo, which means not entertain or pursue the domestic partner benefit rider. However, subsequent to that affidavit being passed along to councilmembers, if there's an individual or individuals who feel strongly that we should reconsider it, just let me know and we'll make sure to add it for future discussion. Does that seem reasonable to everyone? Okay. Very good. Do our guests have anything else they'd like to add this evening?
Oh, thank you for your time.
Any additional questions for our guests? Very good. We appreciate it very much.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gearbo, I just want to make sure you got the information you had requested before about the math, about the renewal, did you?
I would like to see just how that gets answered, just because I see it in here, but I don't understand what you're doing, but it just isn't clear.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure, okay, very good.
You have two things to get us there.
Thank you.
So some claims, examples.
Claims, scenarios.
Yeah. Yep. And then affidavit, and then, I forgot the third one, two seconds.
The numbers.
The number two.
The numbers.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. We don't see any, have a happy holiday season. Next up, we have a presentation on redevelopment-ready communities. We have two guests with us as well. Gentlemen, we would welcome you to join us at the dais here.
Can I have a copy of the 40 on that?
Very good.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, absolutely.
So we have Brett Hanlon, who's from redevelopment-ready communities handing out the information. And then also Dominic Romano from, he's our MEDC rep, ME, let me try it again, MEDC rep that helps us when we need to with incentive, incentive packages and whatnot for development. And he's always there checking in to see if anything's going on, so. So I apologize, Mickey Jo will not be here. She unfortunately came home this morning to a basement full of water, so she's dealing with that. But Brett is going to, going to walk us through the redevelopment-ready communities. We did our evaluation, and he's going to walk us through that. And unless there's any questions, I'll turn over to Brett.
Very good. Gentlemen, the floor is yours. You're welcome to use that mic as well as the microphone at the podium, because I understand you have a pop-hall.
Yeah, what would work best for you? Because I have a slide advanced, so I can sit here, but I realize you're.
I think it's, you're our guest, so what's ever more convenient for you?
I'll get here.
Good here? Okay. The floor is yours. I'm going to excuse myself for just a second, but you're welcome to begin.
All right. So, good evening, council. I'm Brett Hanlon. I am an RRC planner with the MEDC. So RRC is redevelopment-ready communities. MEDC is Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. I'm joined by Dominic Romano. He's MEDC's Region Nine Community Assistance Team Specialist. And because Celine is in Region Nine, he's your primary point of contact for a variety of programs and incentives that MEDC offers. It's a good guy to know. So tonight, I'm going to provide you with an overview of what the RRC program is. I'm then going to provide a high-level summary of an evaluation we performed on your development-related practices. And then I'm going to outline some next steps that the city can take to align yourselves with the RRC best practices and become certified as a redevelopment-ready community. So to begin, the Community Development Division of the MEDC that houses the RRC program is one of three primary divisions of the MEDC. The others being marketing and promotions, you're probably familiar with the Pure Michigan campaign, and then business development. And business development focuses on the business attraction, retention, and expansion. And so we're community development, so it's a bit different. And we focus on creating the vibrant communities and the quality of life elements that attract business investment and talent. So to do this, we offer communities technical assistance. So we help communities such as Celine identify ways that your plans can be improved, your processes can be streamlined, and your policies can be updated so that they're in alignment with the best practices. We firmly believe that a community with strong plans, that serves as a solid foundation for economic development. So I'd like to direct your attention to the screen. And there you'll see what we call the Business-Talent-Place Connection. On top, you'll see Talent Wants Place, and going clockwise, Place Needs Business, and Business Needs Talent. So it's a common notion that cities work hard to attract businesses, and then those businesses attract the jobs, as workers gravitate towards the jobs. But this, more so now than ever. But this, more so now than ever, people are choosing where they want to live first. So, they're moving to where there's a high quality of life, and then they're worrying about finding a job or even starting their own business secondary. And so, by planning for vibrant communities, we're able to address both these philosophies, and we're able to attract the business, but also the talented workers. The RRC program adheres to eight guiding principles, the first of which self-help. So, we're not going to be able to complete any of the tasks for you, but we are going to provide Celine with all of the resources and the technical assistance that you need to become certified. We really emphasize the importance of partnerships. Communities who are able to engage all of their stakeholders early in the process, develop a unified community vision, are not only going to have much stronger plans, but those plans are much more likely to be implemented when that time comes. And I, I wanted to point out Celine Main Street and the importance, well, I guess that, just the advantage that that gives you guys in a lot of different respects, which is outlined throughout the report, but we work very closely with the Michigan Main Street Program, and our, a lot of the elements of RRC complement those of the Michigan Main Street Program. Another thing I wanted to point out is transparency. So, RRC and our best practices are really geared towards transparency. Applicants and developers are much more likely to invest in a community when they know that there, there's predictable processes, development review processes, appropriate regulations, and then a high level of customer service, because it's going to support their investments and make them much more likely to be successful. So, these are the six categories of best practices, and they range all the way from a community's master plan and capital improvements plan, which would fall under number one, all the way through number fours pertaining to recruitment and education of the public officials and also staff, and number six is dealing with economic development strategies and a marketing strategy. So, right now, the RRC program's working with over 170 communities of varying sizes all across the state, 16 of which have met all of the RRC best practices and are now certified. Yeah, that says 15. Dearborn has made it. They're, they're going to be certified. They have a certification event being planned for January. So, this slide really sort of defeats the purpose. It was supposed to make it easy to understand, but please don't try to read through it. The top, the top is really all you need to know, and you have become engaged, you are now nearing the bottom of step two. So, Dominic and I are here presenting the report of findings. From here, I've been working with Mickey Jo, and the, the remaining best practices that are not being satisfied, you'll work at your own pace, depending on your staff time and resources, to satisfy those, and then you will achieve certification, and based on your report, I'm sure that it will be in the very near future. So, right now, Celine is meeting, is currently meeting or in the process of meeting 92% of the best practice criteria, and this is a scorecard that you really should be proud of, and it's a testament to your effective staff, the support the staff is receiving from the Planning Commission and City Council, and it's, it's a very good scorecard. You guys have a lot of great things going on, and I'm going to touch on a few of those. You'll notice the red, the missing criteria are all right in a row, and it's really just one thing and a three-parter that, that I'll also get to in a moment here.
Do you want us to say questions to the...
Yeah, why don't we do that, Mr. Rochelle?
Sure. So, so I want to highlight some things that are going well here in Celine. First, the zoning code stands out as, as an excellent feature here in the city. It provides for concentrated areas of development. That is, the, either the use is permitted by right or via special use permit, but especially the form-based code that you guys have downtown. It's, it's a very innovative-type thing. I like to see it because you can sort of prescribe exactly what you want to see downtown, and so that's excellent. It's going to help you preserve the historic character, introduce the pedestrian, or I guess enhance the pedestrian streetscape elements that you desire, so it's, it's phenomenal. You have flexible parking regulations, you have a variety, you allow for a variety of housing types, and then you have a complete street ordinance, so you are meeting all of the zoning best practices. The same is true for your development review process. A couple of examples, by holding work sessions with potential applicants, you're able to give them the input that really helps them with taking a direction and understanding what you want to see here in the city. Having a professional engineer on staff was also something in some of the interviews that I had with, with developers or applicants who had gone through the process, they, they pointed to that as something that really is helpful, to have an expert provide some of this guidance upfront. It's saving them time, it's saving them money, and it's helping you guys implement and administer your zoning code. The Land Use Application Packet is a great, sort of a combo document where you have, it's an application for all sorts of development processes, but it's also a guide where it outlines what's required, what application materials you need to have, at what time, and then the process as it goes through public hearings with the Planning Commission and City Council. Also, your website, on the Building Engineering webpage, has, has a lot of this information as well, so that stood out as being an excellent thing here in the city. Planning Commission Annual Report, it's required by law, but you guys do it very well. It's available online. It goes through an overview of the last year. I made my job very easy, and so I wanted to highlight that as a positive. Also, the consolidation plan, this is something, Mickey Jo has, has an email where we have an online library of resources, and it highlights sort of best-case examples from across the state, and you guys have, well, your Land Use Application Packet's on there, the consolidation plan is on there, and it's really, it's a smart way to plan, regional planning, and so that's something that you guys are, are all over, and I, it's, it's a great thing. Now, a couple of things that you can work on that could be improved, and I want to qualify this at first by stating you have your industrial park where you do market that very successfully, but you also have Celine Main Street and those sites, and so you're meeting some of that best practice. But what we ask is that communities sort of assemble information into what we call a property information package. And so, we're not asking you to really conduct any extra studies, traffic studies, or market your housing, but what you do have, we're asking that you sort of merge with one priority site, at least one, that, that you'll then, you'll create a vision with your citizens and residents. You will package it with, for instance, your capital improvements plan is, is very well-done, so that would be a good example of something, if there's going to be utilities extended out that way, that would be exactly what we're looking for, is just to tie that together. And then, I saw on your website, you do, you do work with developers with different incentives, but we ask that communities, you don't even need to be more specific, just, just put some incentives on there, whether they be financial incentives or in-kind, or, or really the, the fact that you have a professional engineer on staff is a, is a good incentive in its own right. Okay, so here, got a little ahead of myself, but property information package, so this is exactly, these are the expectations of this criteria. So, you'll see I underlined some of the things that I thought could apply here in the city, financial incentives, a survey of a property, if there's any environmental contaminants that, that could go on there, GIS, yeah. Okay, so, now, another, another thing, this is, again, you are doing a lot of great things here in regard to marketing and economic development, but what we like to see is that cities have an overarching strategy that ties all of the things together, and really, it's the same, for marketing and economic development, that's where you are not in conformance with our best practices, is you just don't have a documented overarching strategy. So, this can take any form, it can be a written summary of what's going on, just to make sure that you're all pulling in the same direction, efforts aren't being duplicated, and, yeah, it's just, it's just for efficiency sake, and no one tells your story better than you, so we want to make sure it's being told consistently. And something that Mickey Jo did point out is the CR2T, it's the community...
Retention.
Yeah, retention and... I just forgot.
Retention and recruitment.
Oh, there you go, okay, yeah, yeah, community retention and recruitment. Their efforts will satisfy those best practice criteria, and so, it was my understanding that that was already in the works, and so you guys are well on your way.
Group has been established, yet to meet its full potential, but off running.
Great. Okay, so, moving forward, we ask that communities adopt a resolution of intent to continue with the RRC process, so just to make sure that you want to continue and that you are willing to work towards becoming certified. Again, it's, there's no deadline, it's just, we just ask that you're going to be making progress. And again, I've been working with Mickey Jo, I wish she was here tonight, but yeah, that's, that's the way it will work going forward, I believe, and I check in at least quarterly, so every three months, we have like a, it's a quarterly progress report, and just, she's able to fill out or explain what's been done to, to move forward. So, now I want to talk a bit about the value there is participating in the RRC program. To begin, I guess, I want to start with explaining that there's, there's inherent value to having an objective third party take a look at, at your processes and your development practices, and I've sort of attempted to prioritize some of the tasks, excuse me one second. But I've sort of outlined a very rough work plan that you can follow, you don't need to, but there, there's some value in that, in sort of having an assessment of everything. From there, the work that you, that you do to get closer to certification is all things that are going to benefit Celine, so it's, it's not an extra report that you're doing to satisfy us, there are things that, that should be in place in, in a city anyway for their, for them to really be successful, and so there's value in that. There is a network, as I mentioned, the RRC online library of resources, so Mickey Jo has that, and if you're interested, please contact her, she can share that. It's a, it's a link that's not available to communities who are not engaged in the program, but because you are engaged, it's available to you, and it's interesting to take a look around the state and see what's working where, and whether that be for ideas or there's, yeah, it's just good to share ideas and see what works and what could potentially work here in the city. So, three months from tonight, when you turn in your first quarterly progress report, you'll become eligible for RRC financial technical assistance, which is a one-to-one match up to $20,000 for a project that'll get you closer to certification. So, anything that's not green on there that you could potentially use some funding for, that's something that we do provide cities, it's a matching fund. We also market projects for our cities, and this, we do this in all different ways. We're sort of, in the past, it's been through our Opportunity Michigan brochure and Zoom Prospector, we're looking into op sites, and then there's all sorts of conventions and developers matchmaking events that we do. Upon certification, there's a whole sort of new level of incentives that we offer. Right now, we are offering communities $25,000 in pre-development services, grant money, and that's not a match, but it's for development soft costs, so that could be studies, design services, environmental, I guess, phase one or, or phase-two work, and it, really anything that doesn't involve moving dirt or building a building, so it's all soft costs, but it's, it's something that's, yeah, we're, we're sort of rolling out right now. And so, I'll make sure I don't forget anything. So, yeah, so, I'm here to answer your questions tonight, but for more information, please check out our website at myplace.org, and, yeah, there's a lot of information on there, and it'll tell you a little bit more about the RRC program. And so, yeah, there's my contact information. Please don't hesitate to give me a call or email, and I'm happy to work with you guys. I really, yeah, I'm ecstatic that I lucked out and got such a great community. Thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate your presentation, and I don't, I don't have any questions for you. I think this is a very valuable program, and so I am strongly in favor of continuing to pursue certification and to resolve those three deficiencies that you outlined in your report, and I'm sure that between council and staff, in particular Mickey Jo, the Business Ambassador's position, we will continue to, to do that. So, I will open it up for questions and comments. I started to my left, so I will start now to my right. Councilwoman McClellan, any thoughts, observations, questions for our guests?
No questions. I just want to thank you for coming, and I, I echo Mayor Miles' comments that I think this is a exciting program, I'm happy that we're pursuing it, and I want to just thank Mickey Jo, I know she's not here, but thank Mickey Jo for all her work on this, because I know she's done a lot and worked with you guys a lot, so.
Councilwoman Dillon?
Don't fall off your chair, I have no questions.
No questions, okay. Mr. Gierbaum?
My question's more directed to City Manager Campbell. Do we have this planned to be completed for this year as part of our strategic plan? I can't recall.
Not to be complete, but at working towards.
Mr. Rochelle?
So, you show us several red boxes on your matrix. Is it possible for us to achieve certification as a redevelopment-ready community without completing 100%? I mean, can we pick and choose and say...
No, well...
We can only do 97% and still become certified?
See, you need to meet the intent of what it is, and so, you could, you sure could make a case, because you do have properties identified, you mentioned the incentives. What I've provided in the, the matrix is, they're just recommendations, so communities can take their own route. We haven't really had any communities do it that way, but we're sort of waiting for when it does come up, so it doesn't need to be exactly how it's written, but it's sort of the intent to have one property all packaged together and marketed.
So, in, in, in your question about that particular best practice, we have not only the opportunities to promote through the publications like Opportunity Michigan or websites, but we also do, our business development side does, they have a sales operations team that, that, that houses a database of sites, mostly for business development, but also includes some of the community development sites, where their information's so comprehensive, it makes it more competitive when somebody from outside the state is looking for something here. And so, you want to have those best practices as sharp as you can get them in order to, you know, come in on the front, you know, in front of everybody else when they're not having to ask you all the questions of, "Well, it says utilities, but I don't know all the utilities, what kind of fiber do they have?" You know, so, you want to know and have that stuff as finely tuned as you can to be competitive, and so I would say that would be the advantage.
Please don't take it as the intent. I'm just asking the question. I've been involved in other certification processes in other walks of life where, as an entity, we only had to complete X percent based on the size of the community, so I wondered if that was the same with this. Please, we're not looking to try and short shrift this process at all, and...
Yes, all 41 of them.
Yeah, thank you. So, first of all, thank you for all your work on this and, and for the support. I'm just wondering, so you said there are 15 already certified communities, so can you tell us a success story or two, or something that, something that's happened? you tell us a success story or two, or something that, something that's happened in one of those communities as the result of, of being certified and, and at that point?
Yeah, so, well, Roseville and East Point come to mind, because they are cities I work with. Roseville started marketing their sites, streamlined their review process, so they have something where it's a 90-day turnaround, that they mark, they advertise that, and so they attributed $90 million of investment in the last three years, and, yeah, I know there was a Kroger site that they redeveloped, they've had some interest in their Utica Junction area, and, yeah, they're, they're big proponents of it. East Point, similarly, they've reduced the number of zoning board of appeals hearings. Their, yeah, I believe it's their, their city administrator, is, she has all the information at her fingertips, she's explained that it's, it's been very helpful for getting applicants' information quickly, and, and they've had a lot of success over the last three years also, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for our guests or for city staff? Mr. Gearbox, and then, actually, let me jump to Councilwoman Dillon, since she hasn't asked a question, then I'll come back to you, Mr. Gearbox.
Actually, it is, it's for Mr. Campbell. The, our three red boxes, they do say the estimated timeline is fourth quarter of '17. Are we still on target with that? It's page 18.
So, those, if I may.
No, please do.
Yeah, those were sort of rough estimates on my part. There was, there was not discussion back and forth with Mickey Joe on that, I don't believe.
Okay. Something like the clock's ticking on the fourth quarter.
But it is, it's information that you likely already have, and so it really just can be sort of packaged together, is sort of what I was.
Yeah, the point of ideas is, is to develop, or not develop, I'm sorry, to determine what site or sites we would, we would target. So, what, you know, we certainly, we have city-owned property still, right, that's, that's, I mean, I think very arguably meets, I, I think that sort of meets that criteria with the, the Celine Land website, so, I mean, I, I do think that we have marketed that, but, so, so, from my perspective, again, I'm not the one making it green, red, or yellow, but, I mean, I, I think that is being done. However, if there are other sites, like on, on the West End, or, or, you know, I mean, you have 147, which is downtown, but it's privately held, you know, so, I mean, that's, so, I mean, that's, that, that's, you know, from my perspective, I guess I would ask, so, give us an example of a privately held property that a community is, is promoting over the other ones.
Yeah, so, there's a, there's a range. There's not any stipulations on whether it's public or private. You can choose either one.
Well, I got that, but my concern is, is all of a sudden, you have, you know, you have, we'll say, two dozen privately held properties that are for sale, and you're going to promote one or two as an entity, as a public entity? How do you do that? And you don't promote the other ones?
And each community's going to be completely different in that regard, and so, we're going to leave the, the politics up to you, if you will, but, but the, the property owners would need to be on board, and they, it's, it's a sort of a negotiation with your residents. What, what do they see as a priority, and what do you all see as a priority? And then it's a decision that's made that way.
Any additional questions?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Let me jump to Mr. Gearbox, Ms. McClellan, and I'll come back to you.
Can you tell me, how do we get credit for some of the actions we've just taken in the last couple of years? Imagine Theater was a huge redevelopment and a number of steps that we took. Do those, I guess I'm wondering, how does that weigh into this in terms of some of these red flags, or are we already getting the credit for that? It sounds like we're having to go forward, but I'm thinking we've already done some significant projects that seem that we would get credit for those, especially when they've just been done within such a short period of time.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's appeal process or something to which we would, because that's part of our thing, because I think that is a great example of where a lot of work was done in terms of getting that to come here, in terms of us quickly pushing it through to get it changed, and not to have that as one of our pieces to which I think some of this would have been addressed, just because of timing.
Sure.
When we submitted this, seems, it's always that cart before the horse type situation.
Sure.
Well, if I may, we have other examples besides just the Magic Theater. The other example that I would cite is I think city staff, planning commission, and a number of parties worked very diligently to initiate a redevelopment of a former municipal site on Maple Road, which is now a very innovative, cutting-edge site that used to be industrial, was municipally owned, and is now privately held, and will be a really diverse, eclectic housing development. So, we have a number of things that I think we could cite as, as best practices, and quite frankly, are things that other, they indicate an approach that other communities would want to emulate, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Yeah, that's all, that's all great, but I guess our, we just want you to be even better. We want you to identify another site and turn that one over to.
It just, it seems that our certification should not be continued, something that six months, we were doing this during this certification period, so, I guess, that's my concern.
Ms. McClellan?
So, the packaging, or the ones, a couple of these that are in the, it's, it's the packaging and promoting of specific properties, whether they're private or municipally held, is that correct?
Yeah, really, just, just one property.
Okay, you just have to do one? You just kind of have to show an example? Is that, because in my mind, it seems like it would make more sense to have a, a system in place, I guess, and I don't know, maybe it already exists, but a system of like, okay, if you want to package a property, if, you know, if it's a private citizen that wants, or a private, privately held piece of property, that they want to come and market it on this program, that it would be like, here's the steps that you need to do that, and then it's open to whoever, so we don't have to decide, or maybe we do, and maybe I'm confused at the process, but it seems like if you had the steps there to do it and say, here, you know, here's what they are, and here's how you get it to be there so that it can be marketed, then whether it's private or whether it's public, it's open to everybody, just come and do it, and then if you have five, or if you have 10, or you have two, it doesn't really matter, so is that kind of what you're, can you explain that process a little bit about, is that what you're looking for? Is that kind of system being in place, or you're?
It is more the system. I think, well, I'm not an RRC planner, but I have seen other communities take that system and apply it right onto their own website. Where those, there are multiple. I had a community, I think they, they submitted 12 before they knew that they could only really submit three or, or one, but, and they ended up putting all of those properties right on their website based on the process and the system that they learned would help to highlight and promote those properties, so that it was in one place, and that they didn't necessarily have to choose on a local piece, but also could, could then, once one was gone, just push another one out. Push it out, push it out, push it out, so that it was more efficient and nimble.
Okay, yeah, actually, I like that approach. It's similar to a Be Here website, may I recall?
Yeah, sorry, that's my thought.
Yeah, so, I mean, that would be a, that would be a, that's a good suggestion. Platform.
It just seems like that would be the natural, you know, so then it's, it's promoting whoever wants to use it. It's a tool to use to promote, you know, hey, I got this piece of property, I want to do something with it, here's all the parts of it that, you know, the selling points, the, you know, here's what's trouble, whatever, whatever is in the criteria there, and then you just have that as a tool for everybody to use, whether it's municipally or.
So, then as far as the three, sorry, three, so, so if you narrow it down to three or to one, how does that?
So, right now, you have, you have three identified and marketed on your website. We're just asking you develop one more in depth, and so, I understand if you don't want to pick one, and I would be willing to take that back to my boss and say, here's the situation, but we're asking that you, you tie in some of the work that you've done, your capital improvements plan, some of the marketing studies, tie it with some properties, and market it a little bit further than what's currently being done with the industrial business park and then Celine Main Street.
Okay. Anything else for our guests? Well, gentlemen, we appreciate the insights. We're going to keep plugging away at this because we understand the value to our community and our local economy, and I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful rest of your evening. Is there anything else to be brought before this Celine City Council work meeting? Not for a work meeting, thank you, though. So, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at, let's say, 7:24 PM. Moved by Gearbox, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned.